This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the meeting of tonight's Select Board meeting, 12:20, 6:06 PM. We have a quorum. We have four of us present here, and Francine Tishman is going to be participating remotely. So all votes tonight will be recall votes. And if we could start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand, please. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Let us get going here. All right, do we have any open time for the public tonight?
Robert Floyd, College Highway Town Moderator. We had a successful special town meeting. We had 66 registered voters. It went an hour, which probably broke a record. Everything went well. There was open for discussion. But I do believe strongly, and I shared this earlier, that if we want more participants at the meeting, we need to let the public know more time in advance, especially with the holidays and Christmas and Hanukkah and solstice. But we did what we did. Any questions, comments on the meeting?
No, I think things went through very, very quickly, like you said. I don't think there were too many issues on the agenda that were really terribly contentious. I think oftentimes when there's something of, you know, major concern, we draw more people out. But it was, it was put on our, on our website, and we'd certainly announced it here. So we didn't put it out on the message board up at the corner, but it's true.
And everybody looks. But we had a pass to invoice article one year. It went 25 minutes.
Really? Oh, wow.
And it was a very, very small amount. So you never know.
Yeah. No, it was great. So thank you for
Cheers.
also cheering that and getting us through the evening. So thanks. Appreciate it.
And thanks Lucy, too.
Yeah. And Lucy for getting the minutes out already and getting things off to the AG. So that was great. Okay, any other open time? Yes, please. Come on up.
My name's Bill Barkum. This week, the town lost an old townie member. He's a good friend of mine. His family went to the undertaker, Mitchells, to make arrangements and was told that they could not inter him in the local cemetery until spring because of policy. And I, you know, this guy, he served this country. He, the disease that just killed him, he contracted in Vietnam, Agent Orange, okay? And now he's refused burial in the cemetery. He probably mowed the lawn when he was a kid or painted the fence around it. I think it's an injustice. And I talked to Mr. Floyd, and he was polite, and he said, it's their policy that they shut the cemetery down in the wintertime. I asked to see that policy, and it was, nobody could find it, okay? I found it, okay? Now, I think it's an injustice to David and an insult to his family that they can't inter this guy that served this country and died because of it. And I want that, I want him intered. I don't care how it's done, but I want it as a proper burial. And that's why I'm here. Now, can the Select Board produce these minutes of this meeting that says, no, you can't do it?
Okay. Thanks for that. I have not seen the policy myself, but I'm assuming there must be one that exists. And I think we, since we have Robert, who's a member of the Cemetery Commission here, I might invite him up to the podium to speak on that. And thank you, Mr. Barkum, for sharing that sad news with us. And we share in, share in the grief of the family. Yes?
Robert Floyd, College Highway Cemetery Commissioner Clerk. I shared an email, sent an email to Ed Gibson, and if I may read, it's a brief one, so we can all be on the same page. I said, yes, the, we unanimously voted on this policy years ago. It is policy. We used to place legal notices in the Gazette every year and stopped with budget constraints. And the policy is basically no winter burials from December 1st to April 1st. We did make some few exceptions for winter burials, and they all backfired. And this is not in the email I sent Ed. The one was business owner in town, well-respected, and we were pressured, and the commission relented, allowed the burial. Big rainstorm, filled the cavity in the ground, coffins floating in it, people slipping, sliding, slush, rain, and we were blamed for it. But I may continue with the email I sent Ed. The ground being frozen with snow cover, digging can go into a neighboring plot. This has happened. Grave stones can become damaged with machinery. Mourners have slipped on ice. We do not have double-lane paved roads that are plowed and sanded like city cemeteries. Our single-lane dirt roads have ruts with the few cars plowing through on their own. I shared a cop, a story once with you, meaning Ed, about a senior citizen making her daily visit and had to be towed out by the Police Department, Highway Department. We are responsible for protecting the sanctity and safety of our patrons there. Many, many New England cemeteries have this as their standard procedure. Many of these cemeteries have 80% of their yearly burials in the three to four weeks preceding Memorial Day weekend. We give nobody privilege nor discriminate, Christian or Wiccan, adult or child, military or not, farmer or executive. Breaking the policy individually is not fair to all those who live by this policy in Southampton. We then set a precedent and may have to have no fairness to enforce the policy in the next week or next month. That's basically it.
What, what year was that policy signed, Robert? Do you know?
I'm researching that. I was unavailable to get to the files. I found the agendas in my email 2014, but I believe it is way beyond that. And I have probably somewhere copies of the legal notices we filed in the Gazette. And we stick to the policy year after year. And again, we did make a few exceptions, and bad weather came, and it was horrible. And so we unanimously agreed and voted on this policy.
Okay. Anyone have any thoughts?
I, my inclination is to maybe refer back to the commission for discussion.
Yeah.
I don't think, I mean, I don't know if the commission, Cemetery Commission has met in its entirety, just to kind of discuss whether or not this is something worth considering. Is this someone who's, you know, bought the plot some time ago? There are no other options? I mean, I think it's worth the board discussing it.
That would be a possibility. I don't know when the Cemetery Commission might meet again, but it would have to be a quick executive, not an executive, but an emergency session meeting of some sort, probably, given the holidays, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Barkum, you want to say something else?
Anyway, I'm
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert, for that information. Yep.
You said that it
Come on up to the mic, please. Yeah.
You said it was passed on the 14th of December 2015?
No, I didn't say that. I said I have references to 2014 and 2015 in the papers.
Well, I do have the minutes from the 14th. I blew up my computer this afternoon doing this, but I know something else I should have done. And it, on the meeting of December 14th, 2015, all things, quite a few things were passed. And down at the bottom, there's a B, no. And it says, no winter burials after January 1, 2016. Robert will be advised, the Funeral Home Directors, and will have a notice placed in the local newspapers. There's no mention of a vote or a motion. There's, all through this meeting, there's motions and voting. I don't think that this was accepted back in 14. So all the other meetings that were had, there's votes, there's motions and votes taken to accept the article. This article was never accepted, okay, as far as this, these papers go. And secondly, you know, he asked, he talked about disasters in the cemetery. People have to use the common sense also. If it's, if the, the weather is inclement, or if it's icy, or four feet of snow, or the wind's 50 miles an hour, of course, you're not going to have people go to the cemetery. And this has no bearing on people walking around the cemetery, okay? I, I'm asking because of this veteran, okay? And I feel that because there has been exceptions made, that this exception can be made for this guy. And this is, well, it hasn't been in the papers yet, but that's Dave Parker, okay? He paid his dues to the country. He's paid his dues to this town, and you all know that. And it would be such an insult to his family to have to wait till spring to inter him. So I'm asking that you work with, with Mr. Floyd to make an exception to this. It's very important to me. It should be important to the history of your town, too. Okay?
Thank you. All right. Anyone have some thoughts and comments on this?
I think before the, you know, without the Cemetery Commission, at least the Cemetery, I mean, I don't want to speak up and do something without the Cemetery Commission even meeting and even discussing it. I don't know if Jerry Parkett, our veteran agent, would be worth contacting for, you know, if there are other options or whatever. But I certainly am not, don't feel comfortable voting something to happen before the Cemetery Commission, as a commission, has even met to even discuss it.
Anyone else?
Well, I Yeah, isn't the Cemetery Commission elected? They're not appointed.
Correct. They are, they are elected. So it's the decision of the Cemetery Commission.
Correct. So I mean, I agree with everything you said. If at all possible, the burial should happen. But that's just my view as a citizen. The Select Board, other than budget constraints, has no authority over the Cemetery Commission because they're elected independently. I would implore the Cemetery Commission to hold its public meeting and at least allow the family to be heard, state the reasons why. And if an amicable solution can't be, you know, found, okay. But I just, I feel for you. I just don't know what the Select Board could do, other than cut their funding. And that's part of the reason why we're here, right? Because they didn't have any money to post the ad to start with. So.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else? Joy, Francine, any comments?
No.
No, nothing.
No. Okay. So I guess my, I've had the personal situation in my own family. This actually happened in my own family, where my brother passed in December, and we actually also had to wait until April. And it was a surprise to us, too, not knowing that that was the rule in town at that time, a few years ago now, not recently. So I guess I would ask, you know, following up on what John said, that perhaps, I don't know, Robert, you've got two or three members of the Cemetery Commission. I know Judith and who else is on your, your commission? Could you possibly get a meeting together anytime in the next few days?
I don't know.
Who's, so come ahead. Yeah, Judith is chair, or?
Excuse me. Judith is the chair, yeah. And David Wells, myself. I don't know if this qualifies as an emergency for breaking the 48-hour posting rule. That I don't know. That would have to check with Boston.
Yeah.
Okay. So Ed can check with Boston on that tomorrow. I'll wait to hear from him. And then I can, and we can't talk on the phone because that's deliberation outside the open meeting law, so.
Well, I think, you know, perhaps to expedite, you're certainly free to check with Boston, but the town clerk is our local authoritative person on open meeting. So the town clerk could make that
So this qualifies? Okay.
Okay. Well, then, with Lucy's comment, that it would qualify as an emergency meeting, I think I would request, then, that you try to gather the meeting, members of the Cemetery Commission, and try and hold a meeting on this and talk about this. I mean, we're in the early stages of December. You know, I'm not sure how, how much the ground is frozen yet, if it's impossible to dig or, or not.
Okay.
But I appreciate having a, having a meeting within the next few days, if possible, and maybe with some representative of the family to be there, obviously, to talk about this.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Will do.
All right. Thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
Yes, Lucy, come on up.
I won't take much time of the public. I just wanted to know, the burial wants to be held when?
It's the 28th to the 29th of
Of December. Okay. So if the Cemetery Commission could possibly, I mean, talk, it can qualify as emergency meeting before then, then they can make that decision.
Okay. All right. All right. So let us, let us leave with that. And then if you would let us know, let us know through Ed, when a meeting is going to be held. Okay? All right. Thank you, Robert. Appreciate that. All right. Yes.
One last, one last word.
Sure.
Doing this this afternoon, my computer was going good. I, and I got done this. And I went to write my letter of intent, I, for, I'm applying for that position on the, on the Commission for the Public Safety Complex. Now, I went to write the letter. The computer would not write the letter, and it would not let me use spell check. So you'll have to bear with my letter of intent. It's cursive, and it's not great, and there's some spelling mistakes in it.
Not an issue.
Totally fine.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it.
Good.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Anybody else for open time for the public? All right. If not, I think I'm just going to take this opportunity, since this is our last meeting before the holidays, just to wish everyone, town employees, all of our volunteers, our many, many volunteers, and the residents of town, a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and any other way that you choose to celebrate the holidays. We wish everybody well and have a great time with family and friends, and hope that we all have a great 2023 ahead of us. We've got lots of things happening in town, and I'm hoping to see that we can come to conclusion on a few things in the next six months or so. Would be great. So thanks, everyone, for all your work during the year, and really take some time and enjoy your family and holidays. Anyone else?
No, stay safe, stay, stay healthy.
Mm-hmm. That, too. Yeah. Okay. All right. With that, let's move on. We don't have any public hearings or presentations tonight. Let's go to reports, and we've got Ed in the Town Administrator's Report.
All right. Just want to let you know that Representative Pease and Senator Vellis have provided us with the information to request our $50,000 earmark for the Greenway and $50,000 earmark for the study of the Public Safety Building Complex that were approved under the economic development legislation, which has been signed by the governor. The ID credentialing system has been installed, and Judy has started to issue the new IDs. And we have notified the departments that they are available. The funds for the acquisition of the right-of-way for the Greenway from Pioneer Valley Railroad have been wired to our Town Council's office, and we will be closing on it later this week. Later in the agenda, you will actually have the deed acceptance for that right-of-way. The Southampton Highway Department dug three test pits at Conan Park this morning under the direction of GZA Engineering in order to facilitate the design for the removal of stormwater, which would come from the addition of the splash pad in the park. And the fiscal year 24 budget request letters have been sent out, and Bradley has sent out the fiscal year 2024 Excel budget templates as well. Bradley has added for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, the amended budget columns in addition to the original approved budget columns. An upcoming Select Board meeting is January 17th and 31st.
Any questions, comments? Yeah, John?
Just on Letter B there, the ID credentialing system, just kind of looking to the future on where this might go. I would, I would like to see some sort of proposed bylaw for the next town meeting that mandates any employee that's deemed to be public-facing, and that can be defined, who is an otherwise exempt, i.e., police officers are given their own state ID, so that they wouldn't necessarily need a town. But to get something on the books where it's not an option. If you're out there representing the town and visiting people at their homes, you should be mandated and required to carry a photo ID, now that we have the technology.
Okay. I will say that I have mine tonight, so I'm, I'm wearing one. It really does exist.
I left mine in my office, unfortunately.
It's all there. Okay. Anybody else on it? Yeah.
With the number one with $50,000 earmark that the, our legislature has provided for the Public Safety Building Complex, we approved $75,000 for the study under ARPA. So is this specified to be for the feasibility, or is this can be used for?
It's specified to be used for the feasibility.
So will we be voting to only use $25,000 of the 75 that we had previously approved?
Let me give you a more complicated answer. We don't know what the end cost will be yet. So might that ARPA funding be reduced? Yes.
Okay.
But I would not say the exact amount as of yet or not.
Right, right. But down the road, it looks like we'll be able to reduce the ARPA amount? Because this is specified to be for the feasibility study?
Correct.
Yep. For what we know. And that was, if you remember, I think they were originally going to put it in the, or at least for the Greenway part, they were going to put it in the bond bill, and then that never went anywhere with the governor's office. And so they turned around and put it into the economic development bill, which finally did get his signature. So that's great. Okay. All right. Great. So the budget process for FY '24 has begun. And I know we did a little bit of modification of the templates this year, and especially looking to have all the departments and committees, commissions, whoever has to submit a budget, give us a lot of narrative detail. I think that's where we spend a lot of time going back and forth, not truly understanding what the request is or what it's based upon. And I think we've given some examples this year through what Ed and Bradley have sent out to clarify that. And, you know, no information is too much to help us make good decisions, I think. Okay? Yeah, Rini?
Once we have a better idea of the calendar, if we're going to be having joint meetings with finance for some of the major budgets, it would be helpful to sort of, you know, back into some dates.
Yeah.
And really get a calendar for the first
Correct.
months of the year.
Exactly. Yep. Okay. Good. How about some Select Board reports? Who would like to start? Joy?
Sure. Since the past two weeks, I believe Housing Authority met. Most of the discussion was around the property on College Highway purchase and the next steps for that, and the bylaw which passed at town meeting. Conservation Commission met, and their big question was in regards to the rail banking agreement which was signed, whether or not they could actually use the trails. I think there was some confusion because the actual agreement says interim use. And so I didn't really know what that meant, if it meant prior to owning the railway, or if it just meant we have to wait. So I think that language was just a little confusing. But Ed said that we have to wait for the purchase in order to open up the trail. So I'll relay that back to the Conservation Commission.
Would you like to know what interim use means?
In this context, sure. I know what it means in different contexts, but for this agreement, yeah.
Because we are rail banking it, which means actually the railroad has the right to take it back at any time.
Okay.
Our use as a bicycle pedestrian path is an interim use.
Okay. All right. So it's not in regards to the trail, it's in regards to the bike path?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That's very helpful.
Now, however, the probability of the railroad ever taking it back and reutilizing it is basically slim to none, just because of the cost of development of a mile of steel and wood rails. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
And they're not meeting until February, and Housing Authority isn't meeting until January 14th. And that's all, that's meeting until after the holidays.
Okay. All right.
So if the closing is later on this week, does that mean the rail, the manhand trail will be open by the end of the week?
Once the deed is recorded, yes, we can open the, open the trail.
Great. Okay. Okay. So CPC hasn't met, and there's no meeting planned. COA hasn't met. The next meeting is January 4th at 4 o'clock via Zoom. Board of Assessors met this afternoon, as it was announced at the last meeting, right before the town meeting. The tax rate is set. It's 1433, which is down from last year's tax amount. But of course, anybody that knows what's been going on with the real estate market will know that the assessments are, are quite a bit higher. So anyway, the tax bills are ready to go out. Unfortunately, there are no principal assessor applicants as of right now. So hopefully that'll change after the first of year. The Board of Assessors has signed off on the exemptions, the senior, veteran, and also folks that are blind. Just so you know, the Board has three members. One is on a personal leave, so I want to just give a shout out to the two members, and the interim PA and the administrative assistant, who are doing an incredible job of keeping the work of the assessors office going. And as, in particular, I want to thank Janine Domino, who's been doing a wonderful job, the mainstay in there. So thank you very much to her. The next meeting is January 3rd at 11 o'clock in person. And then the Council on Aging Building Feasibility Committee has been very, very busy. They met on the 15th of December. They meet every two weeks with abacus, architects, and planners. There's a subgroup that's meeting this Thursday to discuss the actual design details of the proposed center. There's a new survey that is going online. It's right now on the Facebook page of the Council on Aging, but it's going to be on the town website shortly. There's also some posters around town where it can be accessed. Anyway, it's basically to ask seniors and future seniors what they are interested in having in a senior center. So if you weren't able to go to the very well-attended program over at the senior center in November, this is an opportunity for you to give feedback on what you might want in a future senior center. The committee and abacus continue to meet every two weeks to update all the data on the sites, the proposed draft of the building plan. They've also received feedback from the committee. Their next meeting, other than this Thursday, is on the 29th of December at noon via Zoom. The Public Safety Building Committee hasn't met since we last met, but they are planning on meeting on the 9th of January. Chief Workman is setting up a site visit to Hadley. We've gone out to South Hadley just to, for the committee to learn a little bit more about design and so forth. The RFQ is out. It's due back on the 12th of January. And there's a joint meeting of both feasibility committees, the senior and the public safety, on the 9th of February at noon time via Zoom. And I think that's it.
Okay. Great. Francine, would you like to chime in on your committee reports?
Sure. The December 12th zoning board of appeals meeting was canceled
Can we do a little volume check on that? We, this is hard to hear.
We're right on the verge of reverberation.
Oh. Hold on a sec, Francine.
Okay.
How about your mic on your end, Francine? Is that up? On your computer, is your mic up?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's up. Well, I can
Try, try again. We'll see.
Okay, that was the audio.
Oh, yeah. No, that's much better. Yep. For now. Go ahead, Francie.
Okay. The December 12th zoning board of appeals meeting was canceled due to a lack of a quorum. The Norris School Committee met on December 14th, and Principal Pluta provided an update of the school's enrollment. Last, the end of last school year, June 22, there were 468 kids enrolled at Norris. And just this month, December, there were 482 students enrolled, 45 of whom are school choice students. Principal Pluta also provided a summary Principal Pluta also provided a summary of the 2022 MCAS scores for grades three through six. Norris students performed above the state average on the majority of the tests, which include language, arts, and reading, math, and science. At the regional level, Superintendent Bonneville reported the results of a HRHS Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, which highlighted student mental health issues. And this is a lot we hear on the news these days. But number one was fears about climate change, war, and our democracy. Number two was academic pressure. Number three was the toll of the pandemic. Number four is the limited access to mental health services. And five is social media. The lead nurse, Stephanie Foss, provided a detailed summary of the Norris School nurses' work from September to December, just over three months of this school year. The nurses' office had more than 1,550 students, visits for injury, illness, and other conditions. The school nurses at Norris also completed more than 1,000 health screenings so far this year, including vision, hearing, weight and height, and postural assessments. And then.
Francine, you're hidden behind your paper. If you could lower your paper.
Oh. God, I can't see. Thanks. And in addition, the committee of school nurses continue to work on student nutritional wellness that's necessary for learning. There is a lot more information that was provided at that meeting and especially the work, the report that we heard from the lead nurse, Stephanie Foss. And if anyone's interested, I'd suggest you go to the Norris School website. And finally, just to put out a word, that the district is looking to hire per diem school nurses for Norris. And again, you can contact the lead nurse, Stephanie Foss. Thank you.
All right. Great. So if I, just to summarize that a little bit, so I'm hearing about 1,000 visits to the nurses' office? Is that what I'm hearing?
1,550.
1,550.
Wow. Okay.
And some of those are repeats?
Yeah, obviously, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's a duplicate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely a duplicate account.
Right. Yeah. But no, it just shows the volume of, of what happens up there and the necessity for a nurse's office to be fully staffed. So what I'm hearing too, if I heard you correctly, was there's a call for per diem nurses to fill in some gaps. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
For the entire district, I think they, I, they don't have sufficient number of nurses and that includes Norris.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you very much. All right. John?
The only committee that I have that met was PBB and all that will come up later on this evening on the agenda.
All right.
And I believe finance is looking to meet, but they don't have a date yet.
Okay. Very good. All right. And from my point of view, we did have a cost efficiencies meeting this past week. We hadn't met for a couple of months and we did catch up again and had a very good meeting. We actually invited John Workman, our fire chief, to come and talk to us about how the department is organized, some of the challenges he's had, staffing, as well as just the priorities and so forth that he's working with on a daily basis, and our collaboration with other towns, et cetera. So it was a very good sort of level platform understanding, I think, that was presented to us about the EMS side of the house. And we were going to have him back in January to talk more about the fire side of the house. And then that's going to continue on with other departments. So we're hoping to have probably highway, water, maybe police, and board of health as well to come in and talk to us as ideas of challenges that they see, ideas that they may have as recommendations that we could help as a cost efficiencies committee perhaps support with the finance committee and select board as we move toward budget season. So that's a beginning effort on that, that part. And we, we hope to keep that going for another couple of months and get some good discussion going so that we've got a clearer understanding of some real budget needs this, this coming year and any ways that we can either improve efficiencies or save costs. Okay? And lastly, the grant committee has also been meeting. We have a grant or two that are on the books right now. I think you've had an update from me the last time about ones that we're waiting for. There's a bigger one through the highway department. It's the asset management grant that won't be known until probably February. And we have a, an initial one for the work with the Mass DOT on Palmero Meadow to put in a shared use path from Route 10 toward the school and put in a couple of crosswalks and crossing, crossing areas, so stoplights and crossing areas, flashing lights. And that we will know, something probably be, I'm hoping before our next meeting, we'll know whether we're even in the pool or not. It won't be a decision, but we'll know that we're at least competitive or not. So we are looking right now to continue with another smaller grant with Mass DOT that's to provoke, to put up some signage, some speed signs also on Palmero Meadow near, in the school zone area. And also there's a call out for expressions of interest for the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. There's a call for expressions of interest of any kind of project we might want to undertake there. So we'll be talking to some of the key folks that were involved in the MVP planning process and also looking at the MVP report to see what some of the priority areas were at the time. I know there were a couple that were up at Norris, for example, about HVAC and generators and a couple of other things that were pretty high priority, if I recall, in the MVP report. So we'll be reaching out to them. A lot of these grants are due somewhere in January, so we'll be meeting again next week and see where we need to go with any of these. Okay? And that's about it.
And both of the committees, I noticed, were, were asked to approve them to, so they're ad hoc committees, but as of right now, they're going to keep going?
Yeah. As of, as of right now, what we're aiming at, I think, the, the grant committee, we'll talk about in a few minutes, but we'd like to keep that going. I think that's proven itself in terms of being able to identify resources from out of town, be they state or federal resources, to bring money into town and help supplement our budget and do some of the projects that we've been hoping to do over the time. And then the cost efficiencies committee, right now, we're talking about just a six-month extension to go through June, to go through the fiscal year and see what we have done at that point in time. That one was never really, well, neither one were really ever meant to be permanent committees, but I think the one that's probably less likely to be a permanent one or is, is probably the cost efficiencies one. If we can make some headway to be of help at this point in time, then come June, July, I think we'd have to revisit the charge and figure out if there's a role going forward for that committee in a different, different way perhaps. Okay?
So do you want, would you like a motion then to approve the list of people on the cost efficiencies committee?
We could, we could do that. We could step down to those appointments and we'll come back up to the couple.
I'll make a motion then to approve all of these people for the ad hoc cost efficiencies committee, term to expire on all of them, June 30th, 2023. Janet Kane, Chris Fouls, John Lumber, Bradley Oskin, Ian Illingsworth, Robert Riggs, Eliza Puza, Pooda, I'm sorry, Vicki Le Moro, and Edward Gibson.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Lumber, aye.
Mr. Man, aye.
Groden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fouls, aye. Okay. Thank you.
And then I'll make another motion then for the grants committee. Christine Fouls, these are all ad hoc grants committee, all to expire November 30th, 2023. So Christine Fouls, Caitlin Swistak-Rooks, Diana Federman, and then Town Administrator Ad hoc, he's an ex officio non-voting member, term to expire November 30th, 2023, Ed Gibson.
Okay.
Well, it says Town Administrator, so.
Right. All those in favor? I'm sorry, not in favor? A second, please.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Mr. Man, aye.
Groden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Okay. Fouls, aye. Okay. Very good. Thank you. That takes care of them. So they will keep on chugging away for another few months at least and will hopefully get some results. All right. The other appointments we have tonight, we have appointments for the Public Safety Building Committee. We have, I believe, an expired, sorry, not expired, a vacancy due to Sarah Stein's departure. And so we have openings until June 30th, 2025, I believe.
Correct.
All right. And tonight I see that we have, I'm counting three applicants for this position. We have a Mark Mancino, Janet Brown, and William Barkum. So how would we like to proceed on this? Would, I think all three? Are you Mark? Okay. I was just guessing, somebody I didn't recognize. I'd like to probably just invite all three of you to take a turn at the, at the mic for a minute or two and just introduce yourselves and why you'd like to be part of the, the committee and the, the kinds of skills and so forth you bring. We unfortunately only have one opening for, for three positions. I mean, sorry. Yeah. One opening and three candidates. I'll, I'll get my English right in a minute. So anyway, we would entertain that. So who would like to start?
I can't.
Okay. Mark, come on up then. You've got your paperwork in the, in the packets. We've got the.
Name and address.
Yep.
Mark Mancino, 138 Prick Yard Road.
Okay.
I've been in town for 30 years and Southampton's been a good town for me and I've been, never had a chance to give back. So I'd like to take that, use the building committee to, to start doing that. And I think the building committee for me would be good because of my background in construction and building systems and maintenance, that it would be a good fit and I think I could contribute a lot to the committee and.
You, you mentioned one thing on your application, operations manager in hydroelectric? Could you just?
Yes, yes. That's what, we are just winding that down. Our company is starting to eliminate that, but I worked the last 12 years in hydroelectric and I have a lot of electrical experience, obviously, in, in that and a lot of construction. We rebuilt a lot of turbines and a lot of dam restorations, repairs.
Okay. All right.
Also, I had, was a facility manager at the Basketball Hall of Fame for seven years and managed the, all the maintenance for the, all the mechanical systems there. That was pretty, at the time, it was the state-of-the-art systems and I gained a lot of experience through that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Thanks. So Janet, would you like us to read your, your letter?
I have a letter to Ed.
Yeah.
I want to read that.
Okay. I'll read that. All right. So we do have a letter from Janet dated December 7th, written to the Town Administrator. Dear Mr. Gibson, could you please consider my application to be a volunteer on the Public Safety Building Committee again? I strongly feel the police and fire departments need more adequate facilities and thoroughly enjoyed volunteering for the committee, serving as the clerk in 2021. Please find the signed application attached. And that is attached. And Janet lives on High Street and is currently the clerk for the Community Preservation Committee and the Open Space Committee, and previously was the clerk of the Public Safety Building Committee and worked as a landscape architect for 20-plus years. And states that she understands the need for a modern, updated facility for both the fire and police station. These people who serve our town, our town are in great need for more adequate facilities for the amazing job they do for us. Okay? Anything else to add? No. All right. Okay. We've read it. All right. And Mr. Barkum?
Well, as you know, I joined the fire department a long time ago and I was appointed chief for 13 years. I retired as chief. I kept the department out of the paper for those years. It was been a quiet career. It's been exciting helping the people at the town. Now, we went through some changes in those years. The red phone dispatch was discontinued and I got the honor of doing that. I was in, I helped institute the 911 system that's in service now. I bought two trucks, two ambulances, was among the first, I think there was three of us that were the first DMTs in the area. And I was one of the first intermediates to serve on the ambulance. And I did that throughout my career. I think I'm qualified to know what we should have in a, in a new station. Equipment-wise and education-wise is, is so important now to these people. When, when I started, you called, we hauled. You had a fire, maybe we put it out, maybe we didn't. But today, it's so sophisticated and it's dangerous. The, the fumes and the, the problems that, that these guys face with the turnout gear and the training and the danger, you know, they're hard to keep. So you got to have them in a decent place. So I hope to stay on that committee to its end.
Okay. Thanks very much. Okay. So we have the three candidates before us. Would we like to have any questions of any of the?
Just remind, I, I know it's the, we're replacing the, the individual that was holding the chair, but what was her appointment status to the?
She was the chair of the committee and her background, yeah, she was at large and she was an engineer.
Was she, she wasn't an architect? No?
She's, she was an engineer.
Engineer, okay. All right. And she's actually been replaced by somebody else. So this, somebody else has already been voted in as the chair, correct?
Yes. Mark Darnold is now the chair of the committee.
Okay. So this is to fill an empty seat?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So I don't want to discourage anybody from participating in any committees. We, we rely in this town on volunteers and so I, you know, certainly don't, you know, I mean, this is an unusual position to be in, to have three people interested in one position. I mean, I, I don't want anybody to not participate. So, you know, I don't know if there's an ability of the select board to look at sort of associate membership or something like that, but what I do want to say is that I'm on both committees. The Senior Center Building Committee has our building inspector, two engineers, and an architect. And we're having meetings every two weeks with this company that was hired due to the feasibility study. And I can't tell you how important their participation is in this process, to have people with that background. We also obviously have people that are seniors. We have, you know, myself as a nurse, but we also have the COA director, we have the senior center director. And so it's a very, very busy committee and it's, it's a lot of work because it's literally, I mean, I'm meeting Thursday and I'm meeting again next week and we meet every two weeks. So it's, so I, I can't say how important it is to have people with a building background. And so on the Public Safety Building Committee, I'm looking at the committee charge that we voted on just about a year ago, actually, December 21st, 2021. And it says, "The committee shall consist of a member of the select board," which we have, "the police chief," which we have, "the fire chief," which we have, "a member of the Council on Aging or friends of the COA," which we have. We have a member of the finance committee, we have a member of the historical commission, and then four members of the community or surrounding area with experience in, first of all, engineering. And we do have Mark Darnold, the chair, who is an engineer. Construction, we don't have anybody in construction. Architecture, we don't have somebody in architecture. Financial management, we don't have anybody other than the finance committee representative. And previous public safety experience, and we do have a member, John O'Shea, who's a retired firefighter from Springfield, who was on a building committee in Springfield. And the town administrator. So that's basically where we stand. So the committee is 11-person membership. So the committee is 11-person membership.
And we have one, just one vacancy at this point in time? I don't know at this point in time. And you mentioned associate membership. We'd have to go back and revise the charge if you were wanting to do that. I mean, I...
I just wanted to bring it up in the committee. In the meantime, I do feel that with the four people on the senior center committee that have backgrounds in building and engineering and architecture and our building inspector, I mean, we were literally going through all the soils and he went through all the perk tests and all the sites. He's a soil evaluator. Mark Donald's been very helpful. Sarah's a huge loss as another engineer on this committee. And I want to discuss with the board, having some sort of invitation to everyone to participate on some level. But I will make a motion to approve Mark, who's in construction, as a member of this committee. So I don't, let me just bring back the, his name.
Mark Mancino?
Yeah.
All right. I have a motion on the floor. In order to have discussion, could I have a second?
No second.
All right, I hear a second from Francine. We have some discussion, please, among members? Any thoughts? Anyone?
No, I just, I see this is more of a ballot thing, but, so, I don't have any comments.
What do you mean, John?
Well, there's three candidates.
Yeah, 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 okay.
You know, we can, I mean, the way they got phrased and set up, it's a yay or no vote.
Right.
It's one individual versus five of us cast a ballot for one individual. Whoever gets the majority votes gets it.
Right.
Right, yeah. Any questions about the issue of having people in the, in the building trades, construction background? I think Renee's made a point there. Joy, any thoughts?
Probably just call for the vote?
Yeah, okay, nothing's going on. We will call for the vote, exactly. You're right ahead of me. So we have a motion on the floor and a second for Mark Mancino to be appointed to the Public Safety Building Committee for the unexpired term to end on June 30th, 2025. Could we have a roll call vote, please? All those in favor, by roll call?
Groden I.
I hear Groden I.
Tishman I.
Was that a Tishman I?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Lumber abstains.
Okay. Joy?
Piper I.
Okay. And Fals I. So motion passes with four yes votes and one abstention.
Can I ask, Joy, you have associate members on the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
And how does that work? And do they attend?
Yes.
And are they voting members?
They're not voting members, but they are very helpful for, whether they either are going out doing trail work or helping with grants. I would, I think that associate members for this building committee would be very helpful. I under, I appreciate Mr. Mancino's experience and I think that it'd be helpful on this committee. But I also would appreciate Mr. Barkum's experience as well as being a previous Southampton Fire Department chief. And especially if there's going to be a turnover in the future for fire chiefs. I think that experience would be valuable to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay. Would anybody entertain the idea of looking, probably not until our next meeting, obviously, but you look at the charge again for the Public Safety Committee and Public Safety Building Committee and take a look at perhaps adding slots for associate members? I'll make that motion if...
I'll second.
That's it, all right. I have a motion and a second. Would everybody like to vote on that? Could we have a roll call, please?
Point of order.
Yes.
So we are authorizing the addition or just the...
No, we would bring it up.
To have the topic?
It would be a topic to come on the agenda, to look at the charge again and see if we were in agreement that we could use associate members on the committee.
I'm not opposed to it. I just, you know, the chair has sole authority to put anything on the agenda she shall choose as without a motion of the body, but that's fine.
Okay. I just feel that both our retired chief, Barkum, and also Janet Brown have been very, invested in this committee over a long period of time. And I don't want to dissuade them in any way from participating and giving their opinion about the direction of the committee. So I would definitely support having, I mean, I think it's difficult to have, you know, two dozen people on the committee, but to have some associate members, I think, would be helpful.
Okay. I think what we would have to do would be to simply revise the charge as well. So if we don't need to actually vote on this, that's fine. We can just simply put it on the agenda for the next meeting in terms of looking at revising the charge for the Public Safety Building Committee with the idea of putting on some associate memberships.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Do you have, is that the only committee that, in town, that we have associate members for?
Yes, because actually the statutes allow for it. These we've been creating, are created currently.
We do our own anyway.
So it's not governed by a statute.
Right. We get some paperwork on the, I mean, because it's the only precedence that we have, is it possible to get some paperwork to review for the next meeting on the associate members or what their role is?
I'll see what I can find.
What their role is, yeah. I think Concom is the main one. I'm not sure of. Open Space was talking about it at one point, but I don't know if they ever went that direction. I can't remember as well. But, okay, so let's bring that up on our next meeting. We'll have it on the agenda.
Okay.
And then I'll remind the board you have a motion and a second sitting there if someone would like to withdraw them.
Okay, if we do not need, yeah, if we do not need to vote, I hear Joy withdrawing then, okay. Do we need to have a second to withdraw? Or is it just withdrawn? It's withdrawn, okay. Motion has been withdrawn. So we will simply put it on the agenda as an item for our January 17th meeting.
So thank you very much for stepping up. And the next, the meeting is, actually, Mark Darnold is the current chair of the committee. I don't know if you have ever met, but this is our police chief, Chief Ian Illingsworth. He's obviously in the committee along with the fire chief. And our meeting is, you'll have to be sworn in by the town clerk. I don't know if she's still here, but at some point you have to just contact between now and January 9th is the next meeting of the public safety. It's at 4:30 and it's in person.
You'll be getting a certificate from my assistant, Judy, that you will call and make an appointment for your sworn in.
All right, good. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. All right, with that, let's move on to new business, I believe. First issue is the deed acceptance for the Pioneer Valley Railroad right of way Greenway. I'll turn that over to Ed if you want to give us the lowdown here. But it looks like we've finally gotten through all the various hoops with the legal entities. Is that right?
We're at the goal line. So, yes, like I said, the funds have been transferred. We are expecting to actually close in the next few days on this. And one of the requirements for recording is the, select board would need to vote to accept the deed and to sign the acceptance of the deed.
Okay. And at one point you had mentioned, I think in our minutes or something, that there was something about the utilities issue that is not, utilities come with it or don't come with it?
They did, several people have asked if utility rights come with the right of way so that the town could theoretically run a sewer or water main down it. Because we are rail banking and that decision was made long before I got here with rail banking because of the fact that even though it's not highly probable that the railroad does retain the right to take it back at any time, utility rights do not come with the rail banking that we are doing.
All right, thanks. So with that, we need to have a vote to accept the deed. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion, questions? If not, could we vote on that? Roll call, please.
Piper I.
Groden I.
Tishman I.
Joy?
Oh, Piper I, sorry.
All right, Fals I. Okay, motion passes and we will have that document to sign this evening. Very good, thank you. And thanks for all your work on that, Ed, with our legal folks and everybody else to get this done. It's been a...
You're very welcome.
Long haul. And I think finally with the grant funds that have been raised and the help of the Community Preservation Committee, we've been able to pull this together and the residents of town that have approved this. So we thank you very much. This is the first step in a long process to go, but an important one nonetheless. Okay, next, we have the extension of the ad hoc grant committee charge. You think you have that in your packet. It's just a one pager here and this was basically just to take a look at why the grant committee was formed in the first place, which was to research grant opportunities for Southampton from federal and state and foundation sources, work with the town departments and committees and boards to determine any needs and match them with grant possibilities, serve as an advocate to keep the process moving and ensure deadlines and prerequisite information for grant applications are taken in concert with the various town officials, review and provide input as needed for grant applications and make recommendations for endorsement to the select board for requests greater than $5,000. Develop and maintain a listing of grants applied for and received and report regularly to the select board as requested. And we have technically a seven-member committee as possibilities. Right now, we have the town administrator and myself as standing members. And then we have two extra, not two extra, two other members who have been extremely helpful, Diana Federman and Kate Swistec Rooks. And so we will certainly, if there's anyone out there that's got grant writing experience that would like to join us, we'd welcome having another person or two to join in. So please contact Ed if you have that interest. We meet at least monthly, but during heavy grant time when applications are due, we're meeting every, every two weeks, sometimes weekly if there's a crunching deadline. The main thing I wanted to bring up to the board's attention tonight, when we had set this up, we had put a duration on this that was going to serve, it was actually a one year at a time. We've already extended it one year. So it went from November 21 until November 22 and now November 22 until November 23. And I guess I'm asking whether or not people are comfortable with that or whether we might just take the date off, whether we needed an actual end date. I don't know whether, we know whether we think we would want to make this, I'm not necessarily sure that we're ready to make this a standing committee, but I don't know. Ed, if you have any comments about what you think would be useful on this administratively?
I don't know. I suppose, because you're also doing terms for the individuals appointed to it, that until the time that you, the board decides to make it a standing committee, doing the one-year increments of extending works.
Okay. So right now, we had the, the current date was until November 30th, 2022. So what this would do would be, we'd need a motion to extend us for one more year then, November 30th until November 30th, 2023.
Correct.
So right now, we have actually technically expired. And so we'd like to make a motion, well, we'd like to see if the board would be willing to make a motion to extend the ad hoc grant committee for another year.
Didn't we already just vote to reappoint them?
Uh, we did.
November of '23?
We did, we kind of got out of order here.
So I would, I would move to approve the committee charge as amended in the following way under duration, change the sentence to say the committee will serve until dissolved by an act of the select board.
Okay, until dissolved.
By the select board.
All right. That's a motion?
Yep. Yes.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
Francine, second, any discussion?
I'd rather have a date. I mean, the board's going to probably look different and I just feel like maybe we should have a date so it comes back on the agenda. I mean, to be reevaluated either as a ad hoc committee or a standing committee. I would prefer to have a end date.
Okay. And I guess one thing here is that we're all, right now, even though people have been reappointed, we're all on for the same amount of time. Unlike regular committees, we're not on a staggered term basis, which should this move forward at some point in time in a different, different way, it would be more advisable to have a staggered term expiration, I would assume. So, okay, any other comments and discussions? So we have a motion to keep it on, take off the date and keep it active as, until the select board so dissolves it. I think that was the message. Motion, rather, John, and a second.
I'm thinking it dissolves it or forms a standing committee.
Or what?
Or forms a standing committee, a permanent standing committee.
All right. We need to, would you like to, do we need to vote on this motion or amend it first?
I'll just, I'll remove my motion and you guys figure out the wording and then decide how I'll vote. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to extend the ad hoc committee until November, December 31st, 2023.
December 23rd?
December 31st, 2023.
December 31st, okay. 2023, okay. Could we have a second then? Do we have a second, anybody?
Second for the vote.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion is to extend the ad hoc committee, grant committee until December 31.
Well, actually, you know, I'm looking back now, all the people who were appointed until November 30th.
Yeah.
So I'll just make it consistent with that.
All right, sounds good. So we have an amended motion?
It's not amended. I think he withdrew.
Uh, withdrawing again?
He withdrew his, so it's just a standing motion.
Okay. So the motion is to...
Extend the...
Ad hoc?
Wait a minute, hang on. Extension of the ad hoc grant committee charge and the committee until November 30th, 2023.
Okay, all right. Motion and a second?
Second.
All right. If no further discussion, could we have a vote then?
Lumber I.
Piper I.
Groden I.
Francine?
I guess I'll go with the roof. Tishman I.
Okay, Fals I, okay. Motion passes, the grant committee, ad hoc grant committee is extended until November 30th, 2023.
And I just want to say what a great job this committee's done. The amount of money that they've brought into this town has been probably over half a million dollars at least.
Oh, this year alone?
Yeah, yeah. So I just want to just kudos to this group, small group.
No, thank you. And I think for the next meeting, I'll have a report that kind of outlines all the grants that have come in, also this year, the amount of monies that have come forth. Because it's not just us, but we have some other departments also that have been doing their own thing. I know both from the fire and the police department, they've managed to get some of their own grant money in addition to what we've done as the grant committee. So I'd like to present a report next meeting that will show the overall amount of funds that have been able to be attracted into town through the grant process. So, thanks, everyone. All right. Next, we have a right of first refusal. We have two properties, I believe. Map 22, Lot 17 on Crooked Ledge Road, owned by apparently the Stolpinski's. And map 29, Lot 55 on East Street, owned by Canton. And Ed, would you like to pick those up, please?
Correct. And for the map, map 29, Lot 55, the Board of Assessors, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission have all voted to waive the right of first refusal on the Crooked Ledge Road property because it was a request to withdraw. And the Conservation Commission thought because it's a request to withdraw, they didn't have to vote on the way to waive the right of first refusal. They did not. However, the Board of Assessors and the Planning Board has voted to vote to waive the right of first refusal on that property.
On both of these properties? Okay.
I'm going to take them separately, okay? I'm going to make a motion then to approve, or actually to waive our right of first refusal on map 22, Lot 17, Crooked Ledge Road. Stolpinski?
Right, okay.
Property.
We have a motion. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that?
Yeah, so this came up in, in Conservation Commission and Open Space. And there was a concern in regards to whether this was a request to withdraw. But this is more of a discussion in Open Space. The members realized that this property had just been recently purchased and that the buyers are asking for their, the withdrawal from Chapter 61. So there was a concern that the right of first refusal had been circumvented from, by the seller and the buyer. And now it's just a, because the seller is supposed to be requesting the right of first refusal upon sale and paying the back taxes. And now it's turned into a request for withdrawal and the buyers are paying the back taxes and essentially circumventing the right of first refusal.
So that was picked up by the Open Space Committee?
Yes, yeah. And then that was brought up by Conservation Commission and that's why they did not vote to waive the right of first refusal. And there's a, there is a concern of process.
Okay. Open Space Committee may be in advisory capacity, but they have no official...
They don't have official...
No official vote in this?
No, official voting, no. But they did advise Conservation Commission of their position. And I think that's why Conservation Commission took no action.
Okay. However, if I understand correctly, both the Planning Board and the Assessors did vote to, to waive the right of first refusal?
Correct.
Do we need all three committees to sign in on this? Or if we have two out of the three, is that sufficient?
I mean, yeah, ultimately, I believe it's up to the select board.
I mean, it's already, I'm not sure what can be...
And I think that's what the boards were wondering. What happened, does it, is the town just going to let this happen again? Do property owners and by... Do property owners and buyers continue to circumvent the right of first refusal? I think there was a concern from Open Space Committee that this has happened before in the past, and the town has lost out on land that the Open Space and Conservation had wanted, so that was their question.
Yep.
I don't know if that's entirely true.
Yeah.
I don't know either, that's why I didn't speak on it, I'm just here expressing their concerns.
Yeah.
Okay. From what I'm aware of, I mean, normally, as the property owner puts their land into chapter and renews it on a yearly basis, whether it's recreational, forest, or agricultural, there is something in the document that they sign that talks about the right of first refusal, should they choose to take it out for other purposes and not keep it in those categories. So it's not that the landowner did not know this, I mean, I think that's...
The seller's attorney.
The seller's attorney had the duty to inform.
Right, to do that more than...
There's due diligence that should have been done.
Correct, yeah.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Isn't it a deed restriction? Isn't it recorded, the registered deeds on title search, it would have identified?
Yes, it's a lien.
It's a lien on the property right now.
So it should have been identified and brought up in title search. What they're doing here, is there anything inappropriate with it? Is it legal to say, it's in chapter 61, if you want to buy it now and figure out how to get it out afterwards, you can do it? Or does the law say you have to get it out of 61 before you can sell it?
Yeah, they just have to pay rollback taxes, but it, it kind of circumvents the town going ahead and purchasing a property these people just purchased recently.
Right, but technically, legally, we could step in right now and say, no, we're going to buy it for exactly what you bought it for.
Yes, and that's what, the point I was trying to make in Open Space, is this land that the town really wants, is this land that Open Space really wants? And their point was, no, but it's the matter of the fact, it's the principle of the issue.
Right.
You know, they're, they didn't do what they were supposed to do, and now they're, they're, it's the buyer.
Well, we don't know that for sure, right? I mean, the seller could have just, you know, their lawyer may have advised, there's a lien on the property, if you're going to purchase it, you keep it in chapter, and they decided that they were going to purchase it with the lien and the chapter status, and then decided afterwards, I mean, if they spoke up at the time of the purchase, then that would have been a different scenario, maybe, I don't know.
I've got a couple of things, is, okay, did the purchasers say they were going to keep it in chapter 61 when they bought it? So how long has it been? And then probably the last question is, why are these boards and committees keeping these concerns to themselves? And all of a sudden, when I ask a board if they voted on this, it's, oh, well, we thought we didn't have to vote on that because they're asking to take it out, and we understand there's legal issues out of it. And again, the poor liaison to these committees is the one that has to explain that all. To me, that's not correct.
Well, I just want to say that there was a situation that happened where, where the Board of Assessors are in the process right now of trying to come up with some consistent process for the signing off of the various committees, when there is land being taken out of chapter, and it is the onus of the seller's attorney to get that ball rolling. In a fairly recent situation, if you remember, it might have been a couple of months ago, we had a situation where that did not happen, and we ended up approving it, waiving it, it was on Russellville Road, we ended up approving it retroactively, and, but yet, the rollback taxes, you know, are still, you know, there's still an obligation to pay the rollback taxes. So I think we have to be really clear about what our role is in this as a select board.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's not our decision whether or not two people that are going into a business agreement decide whether they're going to take it out of chapter, and then it decides afterwards that it's going to be, either way, we get 120 days from the time we're notified to be able to make a decision to waive, and if these other committees have decided not to, you know, to advise us not to exercise that option, then it's up to us to decide within 120 days whether we want to or not, regardless of who the owner of the property is. I don't know if we're harmed in any way by a bypassing or decision that happens soon after a land was purchased to then take it out of chapter. I don't know. I mean, I think our, our role is pretty clear.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, on the other property, the East Street property, the assessors had some questions on what was going on, was legal or not, and they asked if I would reach out to Town Council, which I did.
Yeah.
And yes, what they are doing is allowed, so.
Right, because there's three lots, and two of them are coming out of chapter.
Right. And like I say, with this one, never heard anything about any legal rationalization or issues until tonight.
Mm-hmm. And we received notice of it at our level on the letter from the lawyers, apparently on November 10th, is that right?
Right.
The letter that's in the package here. And the property is, just for people's information, 12.9 acres.
And we certainly have time, though, if you feel like the Conservation Commission, you know, would want to...
I mean, I asked, I asked Open Space tonight, is this land that you guys are really looking to conserve? Is this something that the property really wants to exercise this right of first refusal? I mean, if we're going to put up a fight, it should be about a property that we want. So, and it didn't seem like it was. So, I'm, I mean, I know they're waiting, but I'm, and they're not meeting again until February.
I was going to say, you know, when is CONCOM meeting again? They just met, right? And so they may not be meeting for a few moments, which could be putting it outside of our 120-day limit.
November, December.
Very, very close, anyway.
Well, yeah, it would be like the middle of February.
Yeah, well, easily 90 days.
The seller's attorney is supposed to create an affidavit that says that the land is going to stay in chapter. Do you know if that happened?
No, that would, that would go to the Board of Assessors. That's why, again, I am saying, if these boards have questions, they shouldn't be asking the liaison to follow up on them. They should be following up, especially on chapter 61, with themselves of reaching out to the assessors and saying, by the way, can you tell us if this, this, and this has happened? Or we should have some concerns.
Yep.
I think in the case of the assessors, they signed off on both of these, or recommended waiving our right of first refusal.
Right.
They did, and the Planning Board did too. I mean, I don't, you know, I appreciate Open Space's notice and advice, but if I'm hearing correctly, Conservation Commission has no terrible desire to hang on to this property, so there would be really no reason not to follow through with the recommendations that are here in the package. It's a matter of whether or not there would be a follow-up letter of some sort.
And I'll be honest, there wasn't much of a conversation about it either, because they just were like, we don't, we're not voting on it.
Okay, well, it would have been helpful, I think, to know whether or not they thought it was worth conserving, not whether or not there was circumventing of a process.
Yeah.
Because if there was an affidavit at the time of the sale saying that it was not going to come out of chapter, then the sale happens, and then the seller decides to take it out of chapter, they're the ones that have to pay the rollback taxes. I think it's between the attorneys as to whether or not there was some circumventing of, you know, the process. We have to decide whether we want to conserve the land or purchase it for some reason.
Correct.
Yeah. All right.
Do we have a motion?
We don't.
You do.
Yeah, I actually made the motion, I was going to do it separately.
Yeah, we do have a motion on the floor, I think.
On the Crooked Ledge Road to waive the right of first refusal.
Right. To accept the right, our right to waive this.
Can we waive, waive without Conservation Commission voting?
I think it's advisory.
Yeah.
The role of the other boards is advisory.
Is that required? I mean, they chose not to vote on it, so.
Yeah. I think, yeah, from my understanding, I mean, we've got it at least from two of the boards, and CONCOM is the other one, and I think this went to the State Forest or as well, on this one at least. So, people have been notified that should be notified, it's just a matter of them not having voted on it. So, so I think we have discussed this, so could we have a, well, we have a motion on the floor to recommend that we waive our right of first refusal on this property on Crooked Ledge Road, map 22, I'm sorry, yeah.
17.
17, on Crooked Ledge. So that is the motion on the floor that's been seconded. I'm going to hope that we're ready to vote, I'm going to call for the vote. Could we have a roll call vote, please? All those in favor of waiving our right of first refusal?
Lumber, aye.
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to waive our right of first refusal on map 29, lot, hang on, 55, East Street, Canton property.
Okay, could we have a second, please?
Second.
All right. And open for discussion? I believe this is property that at one point had, what, it had...
Three lots.
Yeah.
They're taking two out.
But was this not property that we'd acted on it once, once before, and then it was going to be bought, and then it didn't get bought, right?
Correct.
The sale never went through?
The sale never went through, correct.
And so now this is...
It was all, it was all one property at that point.
Okay.
Between then and now, they went to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board separated it out into a lot in the back, which is staying in 61, and there's a right of way between the two front lots to get to the back lot, and the two front lots, which are on East Street, actually become A and Rs.
Got it. Okay, yeah. There's a letter to that effect in our package here, so the intent is to convert the land on lot one and lot three to residential use for construction of single-family homes.
Can I just ask you, what did you ask KP Law?
If what they had done by actually leaving the back lot in chapter 61 and carving out that easement to get to it actually was a legal way to get to the two front lots being taken out of chapter 61. And it was.
And it was, thank you.
But at Planning Board, it was one parcel, they presented a plan to Planning Board to divide it into three parcels, one and three, with two going up the middle and then mushrooming out in the back. And they represented at that meeting that what is now referred to as parcel two is going to remain undeveloped. Correct?
That's the one.
Then they're going to leave it in 61A.
Correct, I think.
That's, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
That's not the story they're sharing in town publicly, so.
Well, what we have is the documents before us, and that's what we have to go on, so...
That's correct.
And when did our 100, sorry, Chris, chair, when did our 120-day clock start on that one?
This letter we have as of November 15th, I believe.
Okay.
And it's from the lawyers for Christine Canton, saying that it's being divided into three plots, with that one remaining in 61A. So since then, we do have, now, do we have all three committees that have voted on this? Planning, assessors, and CONCOM on this one?
Correct.
We do.
All voting to waive the right of first refusal.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? All right. If not, could we call for a vote, please? All those in favor of taking the recommendation to waive our right of first refusal for this property on East Street, map 29, lot 55? All those in favor?
Piper, aye.
Are there, is this just one lot?
Well, it's listed that way on our, let me just check, it's listed that way on our agenda. How is it listed in the, hold on a second? I mean, that's the...
Map 22, 17, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading wrong.
That's the actual assessors' map of, you know, lot 55, that's then been divided, right?
Right. This probably goes back to before it was actually subdivided.
Right. So it talks about, in the lawyer's letter, it talks about lot one being, lot one being two, being three, right, I think they have, somewhere in here, they have the dimensions of each of the three lots, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, lot one being 45,898 square feet, lot two being 784,382 square feet, and lot three being 56,674 square feet.
Right. All right. And lot two, the largest lot, is remaining in chapter 61?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
So can we just make sure that, I mean, my motion only said map 29, lot 55, so I think we have to be really clear what, what we're actually waiving.
Yeah.
It should, I think it should say...
Lot one and lot three.
Lot one and lot three, currently under chapter 61A. We should have the map numbers on those.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if there's a...
It only says map 29, lot 55.
It's not an updated...
Which includes all three of them.
I don't think there's an updated map in here that I'm...
Hang on, it does say here, lot one being 45,000, lot two being, it just says the...
That's what Ed just read, yeah. So on the, let's see, hang on a second, on the heritage map that we have in the package, we have lot one and two, all three lots are marked on the map, so lots one and three are the lots with frontage on East Street.
Correct.
That are the ones that are being asked to be removed from chapter, is that right?
Correct.
One and three.
One and three.
One and three.
Yeah.
Lot two stays.
But technically, they all have frontage.
Correct.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
True. But the ones that are actually really bordering East Street. I don't see the, I can't find the map number, the regular map number, but, I don't know. Reenie, do you have a suggestion to make in terms of clarifying this?
I would just clarify it by saying lot one and lot three of the new, shall we say, subdivision of the overall property, those two lots being fronting on East Street.
Yes. Essentially, it's following what is being requested in the letter from Bay State Title and Escrow dated November 15th, 2022.
Okay.
Okay, I think with that precision.
All right, so the amended motion would be that it would be lots one and lot three that were initially identified as map 29, 55.
Mm-hmm. Correct. All right. All right, so we have that as the revised language. We have a second on the floor, I believe, yes?
Yes, we do.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of waiving our right of first refusal for this property?
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Tishman, aye, okay. Sorry, did you vote?
I'm not in favor. You asked for who's in favor.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know, I'm watching, you see who I'm hearing, okay? Fowles, aye, okay? Although, all those not in favor?
Lumber, no.
Okay. All right, so it passes four to one. Thank you.
I just, sorry, I want to briefly go back to the Crooked Ledge property. I reviewed the minutes from Conservation Commission from that meeting, and they stated the Open Space Committee noted that, in fact, the attorney's letter was not a request for a waiver, it was a notification that the owners were removing the property from chapter 61. So no action is required of the Conservation Commission at this time, which was not the conversation that I had with Open Space Committee. So something got lost in translation between the two, and I just want, so I don't know exactly what the opinion of the Conservation Commission is on that property.
Yeah.
But it sounded, there was no push forward to try to save it, and neither for Open Space, it was just a concern of process, so I just want that for the record.
Sure, that's fine.
For us moving forward.
Yeah, we've, you know, we've taken that under advisement, but I think we've made our vote, and...
Perfect.
We're ready to move on, okay? Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is to take a look at the Select Board fee schedule. Ed, I think you had made some changes last time in the Waits and Measures one, and now you've got a few other changes you want to talk about here, maybe?
Well, I had left it on here in case we did. I had gone over them and asked Judy to make a list of the time that it takes her to process these other, shall we say, permits or licenses. And from what I can see, the current fee schedule is adequate for the time that.
Okay. So we should probably have the full fee schedule before us, though, to vote on itself. So we, we have the.
Oh, you voted on the amendments. If this is going to stay, if you vote to keep the rest the same, then we can just redo the schedule and get it online.
I see. Okay. So we had, yeah, we had voted last time, I think, on the Waits and Measures.
Waits and Measures, yes.
And also adding the police soliciting and canvassing permit fees, I believe.
Correct.
Right? Okay. So your recommendation is that the rest of the current fee schedule stays the same?
At least the ones that are actually under the control of the Select Board. Not any of the ones from, that might be another department that needed the Select Board approval.
All right. And we don't want to wait until those departments weigh in for us? Or we need to get this?
That would be up to the other departments to weigh in.
Yeah. I mean, is there?
Like I say, it's not, those are not under the Select Board's.
Right.
Direct control, and it would not be, they would not be processed through, you know, my assistance. So they would have to do the analysis of, okay.
Right.
The times for those.
But if, and I'm assuming one of the ones we're talking about is the Park Commission for the use of the pavilion.
Yeah.
I'm guessing is one of those fees that was on here. So.
Right.
If I'm understanding, then you, what you're saying is that they would need to do that analysis and let you know, so that when we publish this, if they want to make a change or not, we, we know that before we put it out publicly. Correct?
And actually, I would probably say that I don't know why the Select Board would be authorizing or approving the Park Commission's fees, because the Park Commission is an elected body.
Right. No, I'm just talking about reducing paperwork and not having to change the, if that, if those fees sit on the Select Board fee schedule, why put it out twice? If we put it out in the next meeting, they say, oh gee, we want to change the fees for the park, then we've got to change it all again, right?
Yeah. In my opinion, it shouldn't be on.
Oh, it should be off altogether?
Yes.
Oh.
The only thing that should be on there, which already is, is basically the one-day license fees, because the Select Board is issuing those.
Okay.
The Park Commission is issuing, shall we say, the permits for the pavilion.
All right. So I think I understand, then, that you're recommending that we've already voted on the couple of amended fees last meeting, and that everything else remain the same on the, at this point in time. All right. Could I have a motion to that effect, I guess, so we can finally publish this and get it out with a new date on it?
We didn't have that in our packet, right?
Not, not the one from.
So it was from the pastime?
Not the one from.
Didn't we already vote on it? No?
I thought it was in the packet.
The Waits and Measures.
This one I have in my packet. The others, I don't even have the same agenda you guys are going off of.
The amended agenda.
The amended agenda should be on your left-hand side.
Yeah, well, it's not. But go ahead.
The amended agenda had the, the public safety appointments on it.
I don't have anything with those.
I thought we voted on the.
We voted on the Waits and Measures, I think, last time.
Last time.
We did.
So nothing else has changed, right?
No.
No.
So it was that and the fees for the soliciting and canvassing. Those were the two changes, additions that we had to make, and that would go into effect as of January, if we can get this published. Okay? So if nothing else is changing on it, we, we don't have the full set in here. All I have is the ceiling fees for gas meters and.
Then the next page should be the Select Board fee schedule.
Well, I don't have the full thing in my package.
Is it on the back of one of these?
It'd be on the back.
Oh, okay.
It's probably on the back of some piece of paper here. Yep.
It's on the back of the committee charge.
Back of the committee charge.
That's the one I'm seeing, but I'm not seeing anything beyond that one page.
No, no.
First page of the expense report.
Ah, on the expense report. Okay.
Oh, I didn't get that then.
All right.
Maybe because I don't.
Oh, yeah.
You don't, you, you have asked not to get the original packet.
Yeah, it's on the inside.
I didn't get it electronically either.
Yeah. It's on the inside of the.
That's okay. If it didn't change, I'm fine with it.
Of the expense report. Okay. All right. So with that, we're just going to, let's just have a revote on this, just to adopt this, so that we're all clear. So the fee schedule will change from the January 1, 2015 schedule, per what we have already voted on last time.
So moved.
All right. Any further discussion on this? We'll get this out and published for the January 1, 2023 timeframe.
You need a second.
Yep.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Lumber aye.
Groden aye.
Paper aye.
Tishman aye.
Fowles aye. All right. Thank you. So Select Board fee schedule revised, as noted before, and approved. And just to note, while we're on the sort of Select Board stuff, we had assigned Select Board policy reviews last time, so those we'll try and pick up at our January meeting for anybody who's already started working on those. Okay? If you have any questions on those.
Yeah. So for some of the policies that, so you passed around, out to everybody, the ones that you found that were in Word form?
Yes.
Okay. And if they weren't, then it doesn't exist?
It doesn't exist that I have.
Okay.
In my files.
I think there was only one that we found that was not in Word, right?
Transportation. The one, one of the ones, one of the three that I have, I didn't see in a Word doc.
Yeah, I thought there was one or two that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I did not have Word versions for them.
All right, I'll just transfer it. I was just wondering.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. Assistant Town Accountant, update.
We actually had updated the job request that indeed Bradley received for candidates that applied for it, and we're going to be setting up some interviews for next week.
Okay. Good. Good to hear that.
Yeah.
With a little luck, we might find someone who we can grab for the position. Let's, let's do one more thing, and then I'm going to maybe modify the scheduling here a little bit. Let's take a look real quickly at the, if there's anything else on the Town Accountant position, Assistant Town Accountant position. If not, we'll move on to the FY 2023 tax rate. You mentioned it briefly, Ed, but want to just mention it again?
And I'm going to have to do most of it from memory, because I unplugged my laptop to bring in here to use for the remote participation link before I printed my notes. So the tax, this year's and last year's tax rate, I'll get correctly. 1433 is this year's tax rate. 1507 was fiscal year 22's tax rate, so it did go down.
Mm-hmm.
We did have less debt exclusion this year than we did last year, but I will caution everybody that will go back up again, because we only borrowed for one year on the East Street Bridge. So once we have principal and interest on that over a period of time, that will go up. But the average single-family value and tax bill have also increased about 10%. Dave Zegorsky, the interim principal assessor, did the numbers for me, and this is what I'm going to have to do from memory, since I didn't print my notes, is that for fiscal year 22, that average single family value was.
361,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to, I rounded it to 360. It's gone to 393, I believe, believe it is. So it's had about a 10% increase, and that's, even though we've basically taken the full 2 and 1/2 plus growth, because your values have gone up so much, the inverse relationship is to the actual tax rate. That's why I usually will not compare communities by tax rates. I'll compare them by single-family tax bills.
Right. Okay. Yeah, any questions?
If I could just expand on that. So, you know, number-wise, so the, the increase in values on the property from the 361 to 392 rounding is a $31,000 increase, or 8.6% year over year. Over the same 10-year period, the values of our property have increased by $131,000, which is 51% increase in values in a 10-year span. So the, the cost of real estate in Southampton is growing exponentially.
Yep.
The impact that has had on the citizens, 10 years ago, the average property, single-family home, paid $3,966, and with this new rate, they're going to pay $5,627,000, a 41.8% increase, or a 3.3% increase year over year. But that added a half a million dollars to what we can put in the budget, $534,000, which comes out to 3.34. So I think people are very comfortable with 2.5, 2.5 overrides, but as Ed indicated, when you add in the new value, our tax base is actually growing greater than that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the one thing I forgot to mention is, to that single-family, average single-family tax bill, it would add $181 per year.
Yeah. The good, the good news is, is that according to the state, the income per capita in Southampton has increased year over year from 41,000 to 47,000. So the average citizen in town is only spending 12% of their earnings to pay the property taxes. Which seems high, but in the past 10 years, we've been up over 14%, so it's going down.
Okay. Well, thanks for that information. Figures on the surface always sound, sound good, and then when you sit down and try to analyze them in terms of their impact, it may give you a different story in terms of what that really looks like. But anyway, okay, we've gotten that process through, and so those tax bills will be going out soon, I assume?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. Good. If we don't mind, we'll probably have a little bit more of a discussion coming up here. We have two folks in the audience that I know are here most likely for their PRFs and PCFs. If people wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a motion that we just sort of, not make a motion, but I'd like to just change the order and move up to the, the PCFs and PRFs, and come back to the regular agenda in a minute, and not have to have them sit here for many hours on end. Hopefully, we won't either. But if we could pick up, we have a, a PRF, I believe, for the youth librarian and assistant to the library director. And this is because we have, Joanna Douglas was promoted to the director, so we have a request to start this, I believe, in.
Do you have an extra copy of that, Ed?
Is that January or February?
It didn't go out electronically, so I don't have any of these. I mean, I don't want them printed, but if I'm not going to get them electronically, then I have them printed.
Well, here, you can look at the originals for signing.
Okay. So John, would you like to speak on this? Has this been dealt with by the, do you think we have it, or?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
But the, let me just check my notes here. Yeah. So this, this is a PRF, and I believe, I believe that PBB took it up. We had a brief discussion about it, and we passed it as it was presented. I believe it's before us tonight, prior to finance.
Okay.
Correct.
Right. So.
It'd still be pending finances vote. Correct.
So that's the only note.
Okay. All right.
Other than this, the, the wages and all that fell within the current scale that was in place. No reclassification of any job study or job descriptions were done.
Okay. All right. And since Joanna's here, would you like to just come up and just speak to it, and just tell us a little bit about the, just the hours per week, et cetera, and some of the key duties, having done them yourself?
Hi, thank you.
Just introduce yourself.
Hi, Johanna Rodriguez Douglas. I'm the director at the Edwards Public Library. I was the youth librarian for eight and a half years. The position, so I've been doing both roles, actually, in the library since Barbara left, and that's why I wanted to make sure that when you all met, that we could move forward on this with, you know, more expeditiously. This position would replace me, and it would be, I would assume, just a little bit lower in salary and 30 hours a week.
30 hours a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that you have all the paperwork of exactly what the description would be, what the role is, what their tasks are, and I look forward to posting it. I've been in contact with some people and know of some good potential candidates already, and looking for a good match for the library and the community.
All right.
I didn't know if you had, and the reason I decided to come tonight was in case you guys had any questions for me.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Good.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
It's good to see you all, and thanks, and good to meet you.
Good. Thanks. Yeah, and just to put the shout out for anybody, so this is requiring a bachelor's degree in liberal arts or a related field, where the master's in library and information science is strongly preferred, and three to five years of related work experience, with at least two years working directly with children or families, or any equivalent combination of education, training, and experience. So just a shout out to anybody in town who may have those.
Those qualifications.
Please.
You know where to find me.
Please step forward and at least go talk about it with Johanna, and see if you need more details, then maybe you can actually apply for a position. But, all right. So we need to take a, yes, go ahead.
Do you want a motion first, in discussion?
Uh, go ahead with the discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the PRF for the youth library and assistant to the director.
Second.
All right. And this would be, just to clarify, this would be pending finances approval, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Pending finances approval.
Okay.
So I have a question, actually. So what role does this position play, like, relative to Norris School? Like, I didn't know if there was something in here that says.
Relative to, to the Norris School.
Is there any, like, do you go over and encourage kids to get library cards and things like that?
Actually, that was one of the things that I would do before summer reading would start. It's really kind of an imperative. I'm going to give you a really concrete example of that. So the pandemic, of course, affected all of us. We were closed for a certain period of time, and I didn't know what to expect when we went into sort of a hybrid, remote summer reading program. I went over to Norris School last June. I worked very hard with the principal to find out how to even get in. That was a problem at that time, and we had our biggest enrollment ever for summer reading. It was 200 children, and it, it's really important. It prevents the summer slide. It keeps, actually, the parents acknowledging where their children are in their reading, and looking for leveled readers, and also preparing people for when they come into the next grade. They may have certain books that they, teachers want them to read. Being able to do readers advisory is a big part of that. And so, yes, in that way, we have worked with Norris School, and I've certainly gone in there independently at different events, back before, before the pandemic, to, to sort of preach about the library and share some reading skills.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. All right. If no further questions, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Could we have a vote, please? All those in favor of approving the PRF for the youth librarian and assistant to the director?
Lumber aye.
Groden aye.
Paper aye.
Fowles aye. Okay. Motion's proved.
Who seconded that?
Who seconded that?
I made the motion, and I think.
Yeah, you had made, I did not get a second.
Did I second? I'll second if I didn't. I will now. I think I seconded yes, no.
Yes, she did.
Okay, motion's proved. All right. Thank you.
Losing my turn tonight.
Thanks, Hannah. All right.
Have a good night, Joanna.
Thank you. You too.
All right. And next, we have, go ahead, John. We have a couple of positions.
Next, we have, there's one distinct change in, or difference in here, but I think you can take them both up together.
Yep.
So PCF for Davis O'Connell, probationary dispatcher, part-time, non-benefited, and a PCF for Anthony Yon, dispatcher, full-time, benefited. One of these has a letter of support from the union approving, or them not contesting the individual starting at a higher rate based on their experience in the position, and that would be for Davis, for Anthony Yon.
Right.
Who also happens to be a town resident.
So just, Davis O'Connell is on a probationary period, correct, at 1641 an hour, and Anthony Yon, the proposition is full-time, I believe, at 1876 an hour. And Ian, yes, would you like to speak to that? Either one.
Uh, just to, Ian Ellingsworth, please. Chief, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
So one of the, the full-time one, Anthony Yon, is, is replacing somebody who's left. Is that right?
She, her, it was Christina Atkins. She's changed her status to a part-time dispatcher, and she left. Her resignation date was December 18th.
Okay. All right.
So the Davis O'Connell one would be less than, what, 20 hours?
Yes. 19.5, I think it should be.
And then Anthony would be full-time? Yeah?
Full-time, 37 and 1/2 hours.
Okay. All right. And I think you had said that he's already worked for another town, is that right, in Palmer?
Yes. So he has, actually has the majority of the certifications that we need, and their emergency medical dispatch protocols that he was using in the other community will all transfer to us, so it's a win-win for us.
Oh, that's great. Very good. Okay. Any further questions of Ian? All right. I think we have a motion, and we had a second on that, right?
Yep.
All right. Want to take both of them together?
Lumber aye.
Paper aye.
Groden aye.
Tishman aye.
Fowles aye. Okay. So both for Davis O'Connell and Anthony Yon, approval granted.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks.
If I don't see you, happy holidays. Have a safe.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So last, lastly there, we have a PRF for the Council on Aging.
Right.
Motion to approve it, subject to finance approval. This is a three-day driver, or the three-day driver took another position. Only wants This is a three-day driver, or the three-day driver took another position, only wants one to two weeks, so this is the, to backfill.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all right, so we have a motion by John, second by Francine, any discussion?
It's paid for by, under the FEDA grant.
Under the grant, right, okay, so it's coming out of the grant funds, okay? All right. Okay, any questions about it? Nope, all right, so all those in favor?
Aye, lumber, aye.
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Falls, aye, okay, very good, thank you all. Okay, all of those then are taken care of. Now, let us go back to a couple of things on the new business. I think we have the expense and revenue reports from FY '23, and, Ed, you can clarify, but it looks like the expense report goes from July 1st to December 15th?
Correct.
And the revenue report goes from July 1st to September 30th, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, anybody have questions? Please go ahead.
I do have a question.
Yeah, Francine, go ahead.
I do have a question on the expenses, on page two, under education for vocational tuition. We've spent nothing to date. Now, I know that number fluctuates, numbers of students and so forth, but does anybody know, are we near the amount we budgeted? Are we under, are we over? How many, how many students here? Just to give us a sense of what we're going to be paying eventually.
We, my memory is, we receive the invoices from Smith Volk three times a year, so up until that time, we get the first one, which we haven't received, or at least the school department hasn't sent it on to us. I am not sure about that.
All right, and my question is, I understand the, you know, the, the intervals in the billing. My question is, do you know the number, the total number of students who are enrolled? And trying to just assess whether this amount of money that we've budgeted is sufficient or not?
No, we have not been informed of that.
We have, just to say, we will have, at our February, I'm sorry, our January 17th meeting, the reports out to the select board will be from the schools, so we'll have Norris and Hampshire Regional, and hopefully the superintendent reporting to us on their reports to select board, so hopefully that could be a question, if not included in their reports, we can clarify that at that point, Francine?
Okay.
Okay?
I have a question, too, of your, are you done, Francine?
Yes.
I have a question on local transportation. We've only spent 7.27%. Is that the same situation, that we only are billed infrequently on that?
I would just, I would just remind everybody that the, the business administrator's job sat vacant for 30 days. The replacement just came in, they've given their notice, they're leaving, so.
Who's leaving?
The newest business administrator.
Oh, okay.
So they're in the process of doing a search for that one. I think.
I thought they contracted it out, no?
No, they, they hired a woman away from Springfield Diocese.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you think that's the issue, I just?
I think it's staffing right at the moment, that there's a backlog up there, and they're trying to close.
Okay, and I also imagine that the bus company wants to get paid, too, so hopefully there isn't any sort of demand involved, because that's like over $300,000. The other question I had had to do with tree warden expenses, I mean, we upped the budget on that, and we've only spent 1.86% on that, is that, seems unusual, fall is?
I'm, usually, the tree company that we use is not the quickest in their billing, so I will check with Ron on that. I know we've had trees taken down.
Okay, I thought we have, too.
Nobody wants to get paid.
It's, it's great.
Yeah, really.
I don't know.
It's great till you get into June, and all of a sudden, they all roll in.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Where they don't charge interest.
Right, I'm just, I'm worried about the school one more than anything.
I know, I know.
Right, I've just got one more, I've got my page two open here, just on the, the, uh, the fire EMS building expenses. We've spent about 84% of that already, and does that include the, the roof on the, the trailer? Or is that not included in there yet? The roof that was approved through capital money, I guess?
No, it came out of the finance reserve account, right?
It came out of finance, okay.
Well, it would have been transferred from, it should have been transferred from the reserve account into an appropriate expense account. So, let's see if I can.
Would that be in?
Find a 41, got reserve funds, had 4450 taken out of it. And let's see, fire department expenses have had 4450 added to it. So the expense would have come from there, and there's still $18,170.90 in that account.
Oh, enough to buy a trailer.
So that's the fire department expenses one, but then the, the next line down, the fire EMS building expenses, we've spent almost all of that. So that is for something else, then? Is 84% already spent on that, at the halfway point? I wasn't sure what the difference was between the fire department expenses and the building expenses. I was assuming the roof was going toward the building expenses. So that was.
Well, I probably, if I had made that reserve transfer out, that's probably where I may have put it and expended it from, but it does not look like that was the case.
Yeah, okay.
But you're, you're correct, there's, you know, $1,855 left in the fire EMS building expenses.
Yeah. Okay, and I guess another one is actually on the first page, and just under, what was I looking at? Well, a lot of these that are software support are at 100%, so I'm assuming that's just an upfront yearly contract on most of these kinds of software supports for.
What's that?
On the first page, the software support ones for, I don't know, treasurer, accounting.
Those are all upfront.
Upfront.
Yeah.
Upfront costs.
Yeah, our soft right support is paid within the first month.
Okay, all right, good. And then even though we've got money left for the election expenses under the town clerk, the actual town clerk expenses are already spent at 98%, so whatever that was.
Correct.
Used for, those may be upfront costs as well.
Could be.
Could be, okay. All right, anybody have any other questions while I'm looking at expenses? Any thoughts on any other part of the report?
The, the transfers of that, Ed.
Yeah.
The transfers that we approved at special town meeting, are they in here yet, or no?
This would have been through the 15th, so, actually, most of them, not all of them. There was a couple that were still working.
Assessors haven't been moved yet.
Yeah. Then maybe they are.
We were on the 13th, right, the special sale, two days later.
We were on the 13th, so, let's see, 44, oh, I know, I know what I'm thinking, no, they are not in here. I am thinking that they are included in the budget template that was sent out.
Okay.
I've got the two, confused, my fault.
Okay.
Okay, so the transfers approved at special town meeting are not yet included here, yeah? Okay.
They should, they would be on the next one.
Right, got it, okay, good. Any other questions? Francine, anything?
Oh, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, if that's done, let's move on then to, let's see, where'd it go? The ARPA tracker, we don't have any applications to take up tonight, just two that are pending, but I wanted to just have you have a look through this again, and just be sure that everybody's understanding of what we, what we have. Let me just pull up the right form myself here.
Ed, I don't have this as a document either.
Sorry, you can use mine.
No, that would have been in the original pack, so it would be electronically.
Yeah, it should have been electronically.
I didn't get it.
So we have a number of proposals that have come forward over, over this last, basically, six to seven months that we started meeting on, on ARPA. I think our first approvals were done, well, the very first ones were done actually just a year ago, in December, but the bulk of them, we really started on in May of 2022. And by my figures now, I've tried to keep notes of our discussions, our approvals, some of these we've met on two or three different times. One thing I would want to do as we start the new year is just to do a double check of, on that first, the very first column that has the code in it for the different categories. There was a list of the approved ARPA codes that I think I sent out to everybody. We, I just would want to have anybody take a look at that, and if you've got any thoughts about, maybe it's not put in the right code number, we can talk about that, but I have done the best I can, from what I understand of the instructions here. We have two that are pending, so we have the, the financial software upgrade that we have not taken action on yet. We're waiting for the finance team to basically verify with a couple of other towns which program they tend to like best, and make a recommendation to us, but we have around $128,749 sitting there, it's on hold, it's not been figured in the totals as of this point in time. And then the only other one that we have is under the revising the zoning bylaws. That was a request for $3,000, and that's one that we wanted to have more clarity on about the billing from the E360 people, as to whether that was part of the original contract, or if this is part of the maintenance agreement, and what that is. So hopefully, by the time we meet, probably not on the 17th, but on our second meeting in January, we'll pick these back up and hopefully be able to sign off on, on these, one way or another. But at this point in time, out of the total ARPA monies that we've been allocated for the town of $1,844,554, we have either approved or encumbered $1,413,997.34, leaving us a balance of $430,556.66, of which the two that I just mentioned would come out of there. So that would leave us, taking the finance one out of there, that would leave us around $301,556, and adding the, the planning board one, take another $3,000 off of that, so we'd be somewhere around the $297,000 left in our kitty going forward. That's the way I believe our math is showing, so that's where we are, I think. Okay, so if anybody has any questions on the narrative, if I've miscalculated or misrepresented anything of our discussion, feel free to shoot a message to me personally, and I'll make some corrections.
I have one, one question, and then just a comment. Of the $1.8 million, have we received all those funds? Or is there a portion that's coming in '24?
I think there's one more portion coming.
I'll have to go back and double-check on that, and get you an answer, John.
Yeah.
And then the, that's it for my question. My comment is, is I think on 7.1 to Rainey's point earlier, on the public safety building committee, maybe just adding a little footnote under the narrative, a new paragraph, you know, just acknowledging that $50,000.
Right, okay.
So we don't lose track of it.
Sure, good point.
Time goes on.
Good point, yeah, yeah, and also just to note, too, that we have a match in here for the, um, for the asset management grant, put in through tie-in bond for the highway department, and that was around $35,000. Should we not get that grant, that would be free money back again into the, into the pot. But hopefully, we'll know in February whether or not we get that grant, and then if we do, then that match would have to come into play. So there's a couple of things that we might do a little footnote on. Good, thanks on that. All right, anything else? All right, let's move on. Next topic, FY '24 budget process requests. Ed, you want to walk us through this a little bit? I know you mentioned it briefly, but if there's anything else you'd like to add, I know the request went out.
The request letter and a, shall we say, an example of the level of detail that I am asking for on behalf of the select board went out, and then, beginning of this week, after making those adjustments for amending the '22 and '23 budgets, so they were updated. Bradley sent out the actual Excel template on Monday to the departments and the boards and committees, and I will spend some time and go over that with him tomorrow, because I know I sent some letters to some boards and committees that in the past either may not have existed, or may not have had a budget. So I want to make sure that those committees were also on his master list.
Okay, and remind us again of the due date on the budgets?
Oh, thank you. I believe it's like January 17th.
Yeah. Is it actually, okay.
Because we just arranged.
If my memory actually comes close to working.
January 17th? Okay, and if people have questions.
Whenever the Friday is there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, must be not.
Oh, Friday, January 13th.
13.
Oh, jeez, I don't, I don't believe I did that.
That's not a great.
A Friday, the 13th. And I'm superstitious.
Yes.
Ed, can I ask a question? So on the, I saw the template, and it says, request one, request two. So what instruction are departments given?
Again, they're given the level funded budget plus contractual increase in the budget one. The budget two includes, would be the addition of any wish list items over that.
Okay, and so there's no instruction in terms of any cost of living increases or anything? That would be only added in afterwards at some point?
Right, and again, this year, it says, don't account for that, that the COLA would be decided by the select board and the finance committee.
Okay.
Yeah.
So neither one or two will include any raises unless they're contractual?
Unless they're contractual.
Yeah, only the contractual increases would be included, okay? All right, and again, they, you know, there has been an example from the, the police department used as just an example of the great detail of budget, and obviously, they've got a very complicated budget system to follow, but it's just intended, I think, to be an example, to show people that, you know, more information is, is helpful to understand the request and the need that you're trying to put forth, so.
Correct, both, both the police chief and our highway superintendent, over the years, have done a great job with the level of detail they put into their budget narratives. So I could have used either one, I just happened to cut the cross, cross the police one first, and utilize that.
Okay, good. Any further questions on that? All right, if not, we'll get rolling on that process for the year here, so. Hard to believe that budget time has come around again, but here it is. So thanks, Bradley and Ed, for getting that underway. All right, any other, any other necessary business? It can't wait until the next regular January 17th meeting. Yeah, I think I will just go ahead and mention, we do have a letter from the town administrator dated today to myself and members of the select board, and it's doing, the subject is the Town Administrator Agreement Expiration Notice, and the letter reads, as required by my town administrator's agreement with the town and select board, I'm notifying the select board that the current contract will expire on June 30th, 2023. This clause of the agreement was initiated to identify the expiration date of the agreement at least six months prior to the expiration date, and to give notice to the start of any negotiations for a successor agreement, okay? Good, so thanks for that, and I think part of what this will do, it's also that time is to actually begin our annual evaluation process as well, and so we'll pick that up on our next agenda for the 17th, outlining the process that will follow. It would be very similar, I think, to what we did last year, unless anybody has any comments or suggestions about how to improve it, how to make it more efficient, but.
It's late already.
Yeah.
But one question on that is, thank you for the letter, Ed, and I did email you back, but I didn't see an answer. You're silent on whether or not you want to stay, because I guess it determines two paths, whether you want to renew. We go down one path, if you're telling us right now you're not renewing, then we have to go down another path.
I look at it as two separate things, John.
Okay.
The contract specifically calls for a notice at least six months in advance of the expiration, just to call the select boards.
All right, so then I guess.
Attention to it, I will answer your other question, though, but that's why it's not in the letter. I look at the second piece as really part of the negotiations, and that's, that's a two-sided piece. I will, I will tell you straight out that at this point in my life, I'm not interested in a three-year contract. I probably would be interested in probably, you know, a year extension if the board was interested. I look at it and said, my ideal would probably be a year and a half, but I also don't want to leave you in December in the middle of starting the budget process if you haven't, you know, found somebody to replace me or not. You know, there are other ways around that, too, I would probably be willing to do, you know, more than a year, and doing something like, I don't know, as, as we got close to December, of giving you a rate of work, of working like 15 to 20 hours a week for, you know, a buck or 10 bucks a week to help train. know, a buck or 10 bucks a week to help train somebody else. So, but I, I look at those pieces as.
Okay, no, fair enough, fair enough.
You know, something good, you know, through the negotiation process.
Could the chair tell me, as, as a new member here, what is the process? Because in the past, when we've had these things come up, when it's not the administrator, the administrator goes and handles negotiations on our behalf and reports back. Is this the case where the chair is going to do this and then report back to the committee? Past practice, what has been done?
Yeah, we did this, we did this last year and we have a, a form, so there's a self-
I'm sorry, not the review.
I'm sorry.
The, the town administrator's contract negotiations. Is that when we negotiate with the fire chief or the police chief or the highway, the town administrator acted as our agent with them.
Right.
In the past.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so in the past, what we have done, I believe, Rainey can correct me, but I believe we've taken this up an executive session, right?
Yep.
We've taken it in an executive session.
So it's a committee as a whole?
Yes, committee as a whole.
Okay.
Talking about, you know, what we would like to do and then, you know, bringing in the, the person of interest to talk to them about what, what we'd like to do in, in having those discussions.
And usually it would start with your self-evaluation. And then the select board would follow the personnel policies around doing the evaluation, which has a couple of different options, but primarily it's public. And, and then there would be an executive session where he would propose, you know, what he would like initially, and that would be a series of executive sessions.
Is that clear? Okay. All right, so thank you for that. And then just a note too, we need to think about on our, hopefully in our coming agenda too, since we have already the notice of resignation for the fire chief, we need to come to some thoughts about how we want to start recruiting for that position as well. I believe that's really within select board's purview to either form some sort of a committee to do a search or to contract out to, I think in the past it's been Collins or someone else to do a, an executive search type profile for us, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, wouldn't that follow, fall under one of the exclusions to permit the select board to have an executive session to discuss strategies as it relates to.
It might.
Bargaining with a non-union employee to determine.
Could be, could be, yeah.
Which direction to go in.
But just to note that that's another one too, that we've got to get, get rolling on. Six months is not that far away.
And I think John had previously asked for information about strong chief versus weak chief. So if we could have that.
Have that discussion too. Yeah, okay.
And then have not received any official notice like we have with the fire chief. However, I have, you know, been told that the, not by the council of aging director, but by one of the members of the COA committee that the director may be thinking of retiring somewhere around the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah, she's mentioned that in meetings, that that's, yeah, part of the plan.
Okay.
So the COA is aware of that too.
Some recruiting efforts.
That duty would fall, replacement would fall to that board, right? With confirmation by us?
They're an advisory board.
Yeah, he, she reports to Ed.
She reports to Ed, actually. So that's another one of ours, actually. Yeah, COA board is only advisory.
Yeah. Or the select board could place that, shall we say, early rounds on myself as town administrator and ask to say, okay, and bring us back two or three, you know, candidates you feel is, yeah.
Okay.
That's right, we should interview.
We'll try and pick up a lot of these things in our January.
We should cancel February vacation.
We got a heavy two or three months coming, guys. I, I warned you in advance. All right, thanks. Any old business? So Ed, anything on COVID-19? We know it's around.
It's, it's.
It's back and around and.
It's definitely, definitely still, you know, around. I've, you know, again, I've known more people probably, again, that have come down with it in the last month or so. So, yeah, the COVID's still there, the flu is out there at the current time and the respiratory infection, all, all three of them. I've known people that have had all three.
Right, and so everybody take, take precautions and try to do your best and at least try to do some testing if you can or, you know, just.
Vaccination.
Try to be safe during, during the holidays. And there are tests here at town hall that are still available if you need any testing materials at home, so. Okay. Moving on, are we at licenses, permits? We don't have any, I think. How about warrants? Francine, would you like to shout those out at us?
Sure. Payroll, payroll 23-21 for $319,814.75. Payroll deduction warrant 23-21 for $52,747.13. Payroll deduction warrant with retirement 23-21 for $175,415.16. Warrant 23-22 for $116,580.36. Payroll warrant 23-23 for $323,406.77. Payroll deduction warrant 23-23 for $53,183, $183.98. And warrant, yeah, warrant 23-24 for $96,675.75.
Okay, thanks.
And you all, you all got the details of the warrants in your packet.
Right, yep. Anybody have any questions about anything for Ed? All right. Good. Thank you very much. I think our next agenda item is the documents requiring signature. We have the settlement agreement and release of claims for Geraldine Swanson and the town of Southampton. Ed, would you like to just mention this?
Sure. I'm sure the board members are familiar with this. This is also the settlement agreement that at the special town meeting last week, the town meeting voted to transfer the $7,500 from legal expenses into the settlement account to pay for it. We have the settlement, settlement agreement here, which was drafted by our town council and sent to Ms. Swanson's town council. Ms. Swanson has signed it and now it just needs the signature of the chair of the select board.
Okay. Sounds good.
And we, and we will be through with this one.
Okay. So this requires a signature, that's all? Yep?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Next, we have just one set of minutes to approve from December 13th, 2022. You've got it in your packet, I believe. It was our meeting up at the school last week. Anybody have any comments, changes, errors? If not, could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Joy's second, okay. Any questions? Everybody had a chance to look at it? All right, calling for the vote. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Fowles, aye. Okay. Minutes of December 13th are approved as stated. And just pending items, we have a lot of things we've put on the agenda here just to not lose track of them. One of the things I just want to mention here that for our January meeting, aside from the school reports to select board, it's their, their turn for their reports. I believe, Ed, we're going to have the auditor in person, is that correct, that time? We're going to have the auditor come in and give us the review of the audit report on the January 17th meeting, if they can make it?
I have asked them if they can either make it, if either the 17th or the 31st is better for them.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, but somewhere in January, we need to have them.
Yeah.
In on that, okay? And then, yeah, anybody have any questions on some of the pending items? We've just got them on the list as a holding, holding pattern here, so we don't lose track of them.
Can I just ask a question for the next meeting, Ed? Would you mind just letting us know what's left in the legal budget since we just hit a lot of bylaws and we also.
Sure.
Had a settlement?
Yes.
Thanks.
Be happy to. In fact, I'll just, I will check tomorrow and I'll just send you out an email to them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I think our next select board meeting will be January 17th and January 31st. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Tom, aye.
Second.
All right, Joy and then John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Piper, aye.
Aye.
Aye, Fowles, aye. All right, we are adjourned at about 8:25. And again, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everyone. Happy New Year, actually, and we'll see you on January 17th.